N'wana monso. Kine kaino ni ruu no toto basta. Ayebomu wanne. Ayebon diibo. Ayebondidi central. Oufife butala ayeba. Ao ka yo ukena u. Makotiswe dubegada ayaya wesemene dititya webeba. Ayewena sliwkiwe disyoche, no bohankaye bo. Kila ndia kaimai ko we dala ayema, ko we dala na prama. Anyawa bigo meki ve ne kayeke buta, go abrifi ka na bata. Itana Jesus Christ go anyawa ayi. Na fana. Na ibu diibo. Ya mayla etata, royal father of the day, o nyabo ye na bata. Eh, o nyaka iyo ma yosika inam, abaiman kata ko we, ko we bata. Eh, ibwe. Ibre. His Royal Majesty. Ibre engineer S.I. Pocapone. Okele ne opono. Ayena singe no. Pro the Vice Chairman, Alambra State Council of Traditional Roots. Or the other way, Alambra State Traditional Roots Council. Mano inidiye ko, halo. Akon akamaman. Eh, akon. Ibre. Akonme. Oh yes. Eh, ibwe no. Eh, after flag go go popidio monaday aspo no, no. Eh no. Ah ibwe. Ice ayebidona ayahfo. Eh, alubunamutu nipatayaya jenyeke akina. We do it is yemete. Eh, akonme. Eh, eh. Awo jaman loti ni ruu. Eh. I busy watch. Eh, we don't eh, President ayi. Ohaneze.
Ibo.
Ohaneze.
Ibo.
Ibo.
Ohaneze.
Bigo, oka ne, ohaneze si, ituava. We say kantuo me. Eh. Odi abian. Omo ne, ayabwaji. Ayobo waji. Muge bruzoja kampunye okele. Na nanka. Ochogo okele ye. Malanka, uru apo bata ta, gera ra. Ameka takene. Malachi ne ke ye ya ka. Malo ufu miibo, ipo okele, ufi chi okele. Bruhleala ice meza bata ta. Namriwa ome taloya, tava zinno kwa ya. Ewa iwa rechi okele, we ipo okele. So, okele ayabwaji.
Yeah, because the President. Eh, ukaku ukulu, omu ma joke. Afogo efe mwa eh. Wana ipo okele mwa agri me. Eh bohono ahna, kia chi okele ye. Oh, omo sa na, okele ye ma utaka. Kala okele ye, ipo iba fira. So, ana esela ukuaya, ipu de de meke ipu ova ke. No, ma muiya no na buja sa, ndia onda teke. Ibo ko na naiko. Ah na naiko kaino. Na, mua kuwe kuwe ro, uka na, na pa ne, ah tola tola. Ibre, ama na, kia chi okele ye. Kele fuwa ke ma mukeba, kaima agri. So, ipo ke ba kaka. Na wati te, ohaneze, Alambra ni ne. Si solon, omo ne, ni ne mera. Or or, ye chunne kriye te.
N'aye no mefa. Knock us out. Uwe ye won't talk, odi knock us out. No ye, no bruza fa. Ayena we say na, no bruza fa, no bruza fa. Organos. Didosen yoson organos. Organos. Eh, alocha. Alocha. Bruhko pe. Bruhko pe. Bruhko pe. Ujikoka. Ujikoka. Ohaneze nuno.
Se.
Ohaneze nuno.
Se.
Ohaneze nuno.
Se.
Ohaneze nuno.
Se.
Ayega, no wa ne. Na chuku bruza na ayaya. Yonkewa na chuku kuliye bo. Na ela aruola, nayas. Wana yoma liyoli epe nayas. Ah elarindola, larindola, teke no toto. Sina apola biye. Welanya ina udu, welawa ina itike. Walentia ina udu. Omo na udu to ayi. Oma no la ruu ne te te re. We nu te te re si mu ruu na apati. Na chuku me se la ayala. Ediwa ayi emeliye, ne kele, wewa ayi ne udu. Or ya miye le ne. Oh se kele. Ayewena kele chuku. Ayena kele. Ayana ayaya, yana ngaiyi zike bo. Ngaiyi zine. Ine ke na ina yam. Chuku. Ayana yam iwa na to. Mkezi bundanando. Elinye ba ita, nyamich, nyamalich. Bruhka waya go kuwe kuwe, na rike. Ye ye ra yidu, ana yekuano. Mkuano go tupebi, aga suno omo. Ma na tava du ngani, te yu ko toto. Chukubiko nyamine ne. O nyamine do, nyamine go. Ayena wo deko na 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 kete. Olu chiwa ke, ochoya na wo. Asa pasi na upani. Ye pa kuwe yamula. Olu chi. Ochoya na, no wa ne kanya zeme. Oyambo weko na parala, na sikiwe yu. Nka na toka tole ya, ne ukuwa kani sako de, ya gebo te yemwe. Ibo neke niye. Sako de uwezi, egadi se se meka. Chukubiko nyamine go. La inu kaino. Nyamine, nyamine muwa. Muwa ka waya na zo, na zo ayi. Nu zo anu kuwa niwalenti, be ali. Oyamte kana n'chalo oyaa. Aya omu ne, ne udu. Mbo muwe toto, ne udu kuwi. Obuwe bua ba bua ta buo. Oyamuna paraliye si nuzu kuli. Odiya ke polisi, odiya ke ma isreti. Odiya ke diya. Mka ne ye, akupoi omebe. Ibo neke ye polisi, sina because of you, neke tiya. Waye genas wo me. Chukubiko nyamine omo. Chukuyesu we na iwa na to. Ke wa na, yenaya stavia. Ayena ne, kaka do wa, yenpo. Ayewo po niwa do wa, yenpo niu. Ayewo po niu bua do wa, ayitunawo. Oma no bohono de. China, Japak, Korea, Jam. Iruo wali tala niye. Navasiya be, yenpo chavanki ga otawa iwa. Oh, sena kontena, kontena, God roll, you are rock. Sound, ina we are who was. We contain a name do to te yu. Chuku. Ayega, ice sina ayega dubru, dukuwa. Alawa kawa niya ka wina, yu kuwe. Ayinu kuwa, aufo. Niya ka wo de udu, manu udu na. Ayinu nufo, dema we no ma niyo. Oyoo yambo lo. Anu kuwe ye. Ye fe no, yes. Ye udu na, pa pa muwa bua lo si katu la no para mu. Chukuka do supe nuu.
Se.
Chukuka do supe nuu.
Se.
Chukuka do supe nuu.
Se.
Eh, oyana alka choyle, eh bohono si katu muwa, ope ma, you know. Ah, spea katu kuwa niu.
Se.
Da, chukubiko yava ike, bava ome. Ga we meke. No no, itu ruwe. Anabago. Oka bela ruu ka. Ala yena na ufo, na siya, ne we to, ediwa ne wa kare. Opiwa ne wa kare, na niu puwa ruu ka na ruu. Karamba ra moe udu, moe. We ne se meyu. Oyewe kuwa, nuu meke. Eh. Ayaka kuwa na una, huwa ba, niya ke niu. Oyasi na ayana, nochiya nyampe. Yajoye nochiya nyampe.
Se.
Ayega ta ta, nochiya ine ba. Ayena kapa, yenpo riwa niu. Eh, kai bucha do. Okene.
Eh, the self President of. Eh, Asato President. Akudere Takaka. Although. Deputy Secretary, eh, Deputy by, eh, obviously Secretary. The former Chairman, he then, former Commissioner, Ambassador. Eh, in a prior nature, because. My Lord. You present to be. I can make, make it a, a good. He na ni ga ne. The governor, he be to go. Eh, because. Ice broke na kilo. Ayega evoke ni ma yu ga ne. Eh. We na mane no. Makana ayega we ga, ma ba ta, ya ma n'chalo. Si ba, sipe juu na from. Una, dukua ka. What a governor, si ni kiti ka from one, one ne ka. Mano ni kime de na hola, onde de re bata. At the trouble of the central, the politics people, ufo na hola. Omo na hola, zilu onka. No kete mani mia. Zilu mani mia ba, ye kele mu. Na kiba se, the program, eh, do se ye. Eh, omo ye ayoko ye. Ga na bata ayi. Turi na ayi, alu ife ni kaipe, otuwa kaipe. Ayewebe. Makana, oye bata presi na mu. Ne ta biye, ne do piyosi, no be a posse, proa, we ven e se. Omo ekewa, yo ya posse. So, eh, the self President. Ukaku ukulu. Ye kuza, meke no. Na bato. Wa ni ta troke, ito sa, muwe we ma ba niye. Eh, my kinga, we de, the Deputy Public Secretary, Deputy Secretary. Makana, okuha nesha Alambra, will have quality men in the national. Have a vice president. Eh, Dr. Nanas, the Deputy Public Secretary. Mike, the National Vice, eh, Deputy Secretary, the National. So, eh, in the manner, Ukupo Secretary General, let's assume, eh, eh. Ukupo President, Abro President, Ukupo Secretary, Abro Secretary. Tuona, you wrote in Alambra, leave that aga, but we don't pray for that. That na quality test, you go there ba, go away few minutes. Ala jala ifa ike. Ayaga ne. Do not take more than one hour, ayese bafu. Wasa the children. The Central. Eh, at the, omo ayoka. Ma, we ne, ma ondo so wa, na hanan omo. At the children, si, yana, yana, ha kona central. Makana, unte abwe nu, ne we go nu, mana ayate suku nu ba atu na. And then, ye na na. Eh, omo ma na, eh ba da, ande, no. Oduha, na yama si no duha. Mana, na central, ati mo politicsu. So, I believe na politicsu, come na e, se, mka ayali boke. Ro ali doe, ama quality, the self President. Kaya, ati bucha, kana na, ta so, ote bo. Eh bo iti abagi. Because, siapa bana ayi na, ayawo na kupe ba. Da.
Ohaneze.
Ibo.
Ohaneze.
Ibo.
Ibo. Ibre, ibo okele. Although. He then. Former Commissioner, Ambassador. The President. Alambra State Association of Town Women. The Deputy Public Secretary of Ohaneze Ibo National. Professor. A retired chief judge of Alambra State. And President Javu. Of all progressive grand alert. Ne zelo so reba, ekele mu. Bigo, na yam, okonye chi, ya zelo. Amo cha lafu nuu Javu. Mana, etu becha, eh ama ne bata. Omuwa e, nde miyama apa. Niya de kwa e, ade rea, ore mochi. Bigo, kanga de udu. Nde. Asa kuwe mu. Arupe. Ah, okay, ya, ibo ondu. Hado. Hado. The former President General, nde na wa, ekele mu. Local event chairman of Ohaneze, ekele mu. The youth, ekele mu. The central, we mu.
Ya.
We mu.
Ya.
Wezunu.
Ya.
Omo na, icy, south Senatorial District, ya ekele mu. Nde, not Senatorial District, ekele mu. Ija eya tata. Abro ije the difficult, oyige the very simple. Oh, ije, nde we, traditional rulers. Idu, kano isi, ama ayi. Oh ije, the elders council. Onisi, ama ayi. Oh ije, NASA. Onisi, ama ayi. Oh ije, nde Ohaneze. Onisi, ama ayi. Oh ije, ayenchani nechi katala, call, we bepe. Na ne, kaye si, ne meye, na Alambra State. Inka bossu. Alume su ne. Na ma ne, obu duka ade muwa, oke, ido ne si nuu no. Omo ne si nuu no ni na, isi akwa, omo ta ni na, ido mu. Omo ta ni ne isi akwa, oba ido mu. Omo ni ne isi akwa, obu da ido mu. Obu du ni ne isi akwa, lukuku meka ido mu. Omo na lukuku meks ni ne isi akwa, Alambra State ka ido mu. States ni ne isi akwa, na ikiro, odu da omo, ode mu. Owebo ni ja, yana tata, o konson. Itu. Oh, soni na, kaya mo kasa ukuwe de, sike. Na, come 2023, no ni bo, ga president of Nigeria. Mke wa na remoke, o professor Piyalima. Protagoro. We po. Niya, niya zule sunami, ma manan polisi, de president of Nigeria. Omo la uko. Otolo uko, oda adipha. Oma omu ke. Odu kuwe ko. Chiye, chi chi, ne kuwe. Owebo na e se, na, those days, ma na eke, ija ido, ayi very happy. Ayewo bruze eha ije, we da sakara state level. Ma na eke bo, and his excellency, Mr. Bitobi. All honor of man, oje of man, he is from central Senatorial District. Oje go be tiya. Ayewepe ye, sera, as, eh, talk, de no fe. Aga ikiya ya weke. Oyaya we no, oyaya we no, oyaya we no, amoe wezwe. Na yana na, si, he has saw, only reputation. Only reputation, only. They put on, they put in, from occurring ne. Ayewepe ye, we see, etu was the signal. And they not, they go. Nde we, noni ya anye. Nde Ohaneze, niya sato, nde elders council. In 2022, they not, they are not go, they are be tiya. And it will go to the south. Omo na, amo siya the south, it will come back to the central Senatorial District. Ayene meye tuwa. Oda adak, ando adala ayuma, na bata Jesus. Ayeh ido ye, ayewebe ye, ando na gala. On the night of June. Ode tama omi te na, ayene na south Senatorial District. All the aspirants, stars of the world, they ke, ayuku ya. Sa na ukuwa. Na all the political parties. See from the south, we we ta their candidates. Ka ema bo nde muwa, ka inu ne si, nde ka emuwa, ka iu ho lo. Ha wele kuwe. Ayewebe baba tata, ufo kuwa kai de. Omo ne, me se primary, eh, iye we ido this program, before party primaries. Bo. Kamwa de gala asina, na ba re ya wa. Ayewebe ye na south on the ninth. Ne ye na central tata, on the sixteenth. Ayene jowa not Senatorial District, on the nineteenth. Ayese, ene party ni ne, me se primary. Ayene meza on grand finale, ne kuwe me kuwe. Eh, pi, si suwe, si bo, to ongo na, manu ni ne party juwe bata. Eh ba ayega no. Me ye, ye se meye, weke omo e, umpe tole ta, ay, nepe tole ta tata. Makana, before I say bafu. Ayega ho ta, ni ge de la ekomi ke. Eh, me se, ayagwa, eh mano iya ikuwe. Ayewe, basa. So, na tata. Bu nuu bosse, na central Senatorial District. The implication, ma de si, so is a help for. Bu no weko si nuu nuu, no sakara help for. Ma no boni kuwe, olu pa nuu nuu, no se kuwa. And no wekodi, isi, mode central. Eh, sina uku, sina mba na, aga zobea, azoka te ya, owa na ka. Omuwa e, ge me se tuwa e, eh be udu no. The we go here, but are central. Mana, omen me, this must be. We must always get it right. So, na, tata. Abro, kai, je. Ube. Oh, ihe, ati bebu, oda beji, oda be difficult. Ma no ome kele kuwe, oda ati be difficult. Alwa lebu, ala, ala wa kesi apwe. Alwa lebu kuwe, ala wa kesi apwe. When I yo, omo ne, bigo, ye ayegsove. Kaine ye, kuwa ta support. Makana, omo na, ayemataro ofma ta, ayebaja na sina ayana so president. No to na ayi, no ru la ayi, na no se, ke to noni buka ho. Ofu ye, pakora politiska le, ofu ye, anana uka. Unu wa, nabu nu, une doste, yu ofma nabu nu. Oyaya kanyese, na omo ne si nuu no, ni na ade muwa. Ma ke ba, we si se unti, ne si nuu no, de muwa, Nigeria ade mu. So, na eh niye ofma tata, ne si nuu na, mka ido kuwe. Oyabo, na ine ku, ayewa kuja ne ku, bo, ke ne ku. Noni. Ibo, tolu, iwa ta president, no se, mo ike ga enti, ama bage apaga. Eh, we nde, si cha, eh be di chi cha so. Ayana yam, soa bigo kaya na yam. Pako Ohaneze, ayaya warani, ayaya waro polisi. Soa bigo kaya na yam. Eh, eh ti kuwe le, bele. Ayana yam kucho, nyabiko, yi ye ni na ayi jesuwe. Ona ga na ayi tuwa, na ni nuwa ro. Akani kuwa ke, ka ke, we kuwa akani. Ayema, no ome nde, tozu de tozu, jesu ya, si ma not, ma central. Ma na ayana yam, ka isi ne tuwa, ne ne. Ndudu, eh watakai doze ba yam ofma, kaya ala na kona kona ayi. Omo na, na ye tofu lo ome. Na ndilo ne begi, ye ne befu me. Odu bu me. So, na, ay dosu to muwa e, uli krisu. No so, ama na fu, eh dasu we, eh, to na yam. Na na state, de kuha e. Omo na, na body election, apart from general security. Omo na, na body election, yi ya ayegsove. Ayene me, zoom by zoom. Omen my friend, oya osa, from Cairo State. Oh, this is the last, eh, last week. Also, makana, never had no ke, dan, omo na, the fact, na ge buwe go kuwa. Maybe here, siya na ibo, ayade e muwa, ayade e maybe here. Ayene juwa yam, na ya no, wa lo na ome, welanya, ye, ando na gasa ayi. Also, ah, but wa de re ba ke, ay siya na, ka isi ye, eh. Ayade e juwa, ayade e ti bo na so bo, wele ke, ayi we. Ayene juwa yam, ne kanuwa la polisi, ne kanuwa e. Ne meye ayene. Where are you? Bigo, tata, ma bo, bosse uku. Eh, ta, bosse action. Soa bigo bo, kasi we ku, kaya na yam, omo ne e, we ndi. Omo ye, see from north, a choice wa ayi, we ndi. Yi ye ne ga ayi. In 1978, let me give a memory link, a little bit. When I eke, would late doctor, I like to go e. Also, with you know, ona sort of. Eh, me e kesi, me. Orabofa, orabofa na omo. Genius, eh, siya ba, oh ya. Siya biya. Koglo va is to shu shakare. Owe, ke president election, election kuwe me, war, o no, lost to jumo. Yiye tu ku de, o de ye. So, ayana yam, omo ne e, bigo, omo na tu ku ku, ne ga Alambra State. Ega che Alambra State, mana che lo, olo tolo. Alma yopasi umu, bigo. Opo de lo, elan ome. Obe te ha ka. Nde, lugo eighteen years, nde lugo before, luke ta, aga ido kuwa, eh registration of voters. Una tu go, ever fo ni ne kepa. Aga na, ala, o pulling units, ever aga na tu ku. Bigo, omo ye ome ya, lugo eighteen years. Ohaneze ni bo, na yam, bigo, odi ruu, ota ne. Omo no, omo ye ka, diama go iku, iku, odi ruu, ye balo so. Obo siya, ayapota de ni kuwe. Ibre ike, ma ke ija ka. Kaya kuwa na ka ayi, uo, no niya, koga bo, ochi Alambra, ochi boye muwa, ochi tiya ofma. Eh, no nuu no. Nde kotala ota, etiri ye muwa. So, na yu, na, oku ne si. Soa na yo, na, oku ne si ni ke, owo weku, ka oku se se ya ba, uh, wa je. Uh, ay e wa je, senara, we yo sae ne diya ma, also e ke ne, yama, ungo si, weka na si. Ka tu kuji ke ni, ne go si e udu, na, na wa, na monso, amen.
Yes, you go be bo. Very nice. People no mobile oke we, president ka, Ibro, na, both of them, they ke, who, ema do re me. Um, so na, we be fed, the state president to go, the vice president. So ni na, editora, o na, omo lo president, we don't be bad yet, we na, uh, amu ke pa nyabo. Manana, before we go, we. And na, I see, I'm a little afraid, that they have the state president of orane, never, oh, African. They are only never based on zoning system. They create a, the way, the president of Asa, Asa Akundu, who has to be the president of Asa, on of Asa, based on zoning. Who on the way never, the national vice president of orane, no ever based on zoning. So, because of literature, we are going to show. Why not answer to the thinkers, how they can first style cap from a losing boy, and somehow that part to the. They ask us to start a zoning formula. Who no matter if Natali, you are an anambraste, omo na they be zoning, the day I gave me, but many of them now control, they check. Man de, man de kobea, man de langwa, man de ra, no una buta, and get up, and go and ambraman. The fact of mobilization, of present generation, can make you, you will just election, ever, and the two diva, and so on. So, I don't promote guy from Asa, making trends, zoning formula, and they have been working for us. As in Asa, we did, we have never have the serious case of, uh, problem in election. They know that everybody that follow hanes, they to scare them, and our needs are of a state, oh, it is fraud, everyone they look at, you know, na na. But my position as a president of Asa today, I moved emotion, statewide, uh, branches of orane, and to be powered by Asa. That's why, every state of hanes, they can work with the Asa. As, uh, no, no, Asa to president, vice president of hanes, automatic, to be let you win the president of Asa, you automatically vice president of orane, in a number. In the far, some people say, never hanes, it's the only in a number what you pull in, uh, in action. Uh, the town union president is automatically the chairman of orane, in their community, we don't play their mother's part. The woman in the day, is in the police, don't worry, on hanes, there, you play the day, it's safe, it's safe, the local government, I would say, the market, amen. So, uh, it's only, on hanes, Asa, when a be mora, you focus zoning, because omo no we live, they made the man. He made omo ne, be no from there. In our hanes, I had to report, may election, and they ke, three local government, ahead of the pre-election, they may even olo nte bo. Ome we, you were the answer, so it's okay, we go to. Manana, I didn't have, you know, na central, ka, no today, na central, uh, uh, o, o na central, ke, uh, my, it's more, omo no, what do we? Ode ka na central, ka, manka man de kuwe. It's a, ah, we see na pa ke, pa kuwa, na central, ka, ebe, pa mani ku. Pepe, pepe, ka. Pa mani ku. So, ah, we we, ah, we we, we we, we we, we we, we we, we we. Eh bien, whether we like it or not, the father of zoning, who from central, we do. You can deny that. Again, it's a piece of, na, de no, eh, de, eh, na, eh, the bill, they say, this is, everybody support eh, they're not win eh. You face the way to one, over to one, ona de, ta ya anambrabere, you can de no, you know, you are. Malifede, umi mi loe ta, o na, seven million, by any fan, eh, no hanes, the NASA. The two different members, leader of orane, and NASA, today, are from central, and two of them are from Indemn. But their inter-meeting on ground, they had continued, I have a pleasure to change it, but because of the, etu, hanes, they are part. They will be changing, etu, determine, they are part, they change it eh. How we do back, we go for, they go nine one, because by the, not by July, uh, twenty seventeen, hanes are for best conference. The echo, even down of no, now, Jason Motte, on August, two thousand and seventeen, I already decision, I went. They would they, edas council, edas council, headed by a mechanic, and the bekuwe men is right, they were all there, eti have a bishop. Eti, na, gender of that, which is that, it's enter, and they all adopted the zoning formula, Asa to handle hanes approach. After that war, the, the vice president, the deputy, uh, president, indeed, with Anambra, of a volunteer, and their own council meeting, headed by a volunteer. Adopted the zoning formula, the way we are talking about today, the same way, Asa adopted it. Because of all this adoption, the year two thousand and nineteen, I'm the edas council meeting, again, they bring all of them together, where should come in. And then, a ban eh, even if you see, to this, non na oye, be no, separate from a zoning. If, ndi we, in the Anambraste, in the town union, no hanes, edas council, selected, may entr. Oye na, ndoka, the person says edas council, all the bishops, and many of them, so, oye, ayam, we have to think, go to zoning. And, as I'm talking to you today, no, I have verified, before politicians, before you say race of money, they, ah, race no money, they can't, we will money ke. I'm not see, we we have, o na, I put a, you go, you go, man, they have, oye, see, we have, you go, we have. You go give, but they have, I go lot, ay oto, we go, you 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 go. You go, we have, they just do, we have, oye, I try, so, we have, I'm a, I'm a, but oye, be great, I see no way eh. Who no name, no baro people, total is election, na south, na, o na man, over go, I must remain in the central, er, class of people, they are bad. Oh, the, na, no, no, since over, omo de south, we have tried, we go, a karate deck, you like, ah, for, na central, ka, eh. Mano, omo, omo, nde ago, na, go, 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 we know, because only system, ah, we we.
Because I have to make it possible. Oh, we have got a role. And we will do it. Like I said, we will be here. So that's the purpose of it, because it's beneficial. Now, when we want to win, we want to win, not to end up on the ground. Or not to end up on the ground. Oh, we are because and I am not wanting to do it. We did not do this, but we did not do it. No question. If I am here today, this election, there is a number of people. They did not go to the town, they do not, they do not want to. They do not want to do it. Because initially, they do not vote. He left for a year, he left for a year. But now, he is here, he is here. He is not going to do it. He is not going to do it. God, imagine that, that he is here, that he is here. Why do you want to do it? So, the most important, come here, many of you are adapting to votes. So, what are we saying? If anyone, they keep pleasing. And don't hesitate. They keep pleasing. Oh, we are not here, we are not here. And we are not here to vote. Like I said, if we are not here to debate, we are not here to debate. Oh, we are not here to discuss, to debate. Oh, they do not get it. Gavot, my God, pass a call, Gavot. But in our body language, and the every instance of his actions, he wants it to happen, because always beneficial. So, if one man has a message, he says, I just want to know. We, I am not doing it, which legally, nine words, understanding with the governor, and he is not against this story, because he is a beneficial. When I am in Central, on purpose, by the moon of man, I would say, one or two, eh, effort. Eh, for one, I did not put any effort in. He got to put more effort, however. Oh, he goes, I want to talk to him, I want to talk to him. Oh, he is not going to talk, oh, he is not going to talk. What's he going to say, ah, who's who, who's who, who's who, no, he is not. So, oh, we are here, so we can have who's who, who's who. Who is it who are not me, eh, and they are not bad, they are not today. Oh, we are, oh, we are, he got a bad. Like all the people who are there, but they are not let develop. And I could see, but he has not been there. He is not there, he is not there, but he did not have a good time. He said, who are you? But I'm bored, I'm not there, I'm not there. I can't be in the class, now, about the learners. But so, he did not get. He really gives you promote, eh, go to the door, the normal man, he is not. Oh, that, I can't give you, who knows, but I can order. Yeah, now, Professor Omani, my lord. We are proud of you, because I am, we are here, we are here, we are here. Oh, I am here, therefore, I have a political party. We cannot buy a card to contest. We cannot even ask you to contest. Because, eh, if I have to, eh, I am not going to, I don't need to. Oh, he is not here, he is not here, but he is not here. But where is in those, it's never in the freezer. You can't stay in your house. We are not here to say, I am cold, eh. Oh, we are not here to ask you, now, to not go, to run, to get out. You have to fight for it, struggle for it, handshake across the nation, you must do it. So, in that, if anyone is here today, and my young, in Central, oh, for, oh, oh, the, an number of, oh, the, the, and the, oh, I am here. Oh, we are not, we are not, eh, with the, eh, not. Because in Central, we are not here to be, because, oh, now, I am part of you. We are not going to sell a seminar. And for the family, she is going to be there, a seminar. But he may be there, and then, because he is a man, also come by the seminar. Because, I father is a man. So, what I can do, I can do, so. If I am, I am, eh, no, 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 I go up here, please. Even if you hear, no, I, no, I, no, I go up here, because I hear, no, I go up here. Oh, we are here, here, much, much support. They are doing well. They will back like a woman. This is, before I conclude, do we do it now? Oh, I am here, as a director, local government, three, four years ago. Me, the, they all accepted it. Before I go, before the, eh, eh, that council adopted it too. Oh, we are never at that. Only, many years ago, on a lawyer, career, eighty years or four years. I'm not going to, I'm not going to. Some of us, yeah, have been victim of Zoni. I think of this election. Precious, you are here, I can't, I can't, I can't. When they look, oh, who is Central, somebody, you were there. We know, I can't blow, but you know, I do, eh, eh, eh. There are more, eh, in the, eh, 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 Central. Um, doctor, eh, eh, eh. Oh, yes, you are, Senator, eh, 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 because I'm not supposed to. Now, I can't do that, and you go, you do, eh, eh, eh. Where can I say, can follow, eh, eh. Somebody welcome, eh, same one, eh, call, same one, eh. I am a part of National Office. Where is the, eh, 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 eh. Can't you choose or issue for, somebody back from, eh, after Central or Road North? Ah, they pay another four years, don't look at it, eh, eh. Eh, because, eh, 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 eh. Oh, I'm a, she, she, the group one. Now, but after four years, they gave the opportunity, the national center. After eighty years, Bruce Day President, there's nothing God has prepared that will not be actualized. Oh, my God, thank you. So, many of us are like, eh, to, have one advocating for zone, zona elections, that go on weekend. I had a party, it happened, who will go for any political party? We are not involved. But I am here, who gave the data, eh, okay, why can't, eh, it was, no, no, no. Now, okay, the first of South, all those positions in the, eh, eh, eh. But I talk, eh, 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 very, cannot, eh, eh, eh.
Yao, sidae bo, bo kenano, ma kanon ye zowale. Ka we lo fuwe, we na batu, mechi e vento yu. Biko kulo nato. Kai mo bebe. Jigitem, onye wem Jesus jigitem. Jigitem o, jigitem, onye wem Jesus jigitem. Oso ni, ka ita wa, ka ita wa, mebe ki, ka ite be yuwa. Yenike, oke mi de. Ya eya re da, kolo Jesus aga. Biko na wu yana. Obo na e buwe bebe ni na e biva. Maraya maro ike, mmasi e buwe. Na omo dojineke, ibe ni na e bo ko na anaja. Oye yani ike, oye yonane. Oye yonane zike, oye yasati ike, oye yana prastetike, iwe n'ota. Kai we we iki meke ne, iha chi, iha nebe. The zoning system. Ane bu. Emore fo so di ni me, na broka kineba. Ke mo ye, ke bebe ni me. Ni ka e we bu. Obo lae to ma ka dinta. Ma ni wa na kuosi, o kuja ka e si kaano. Ma na se na ajo ta maluke. Ne bu te, ngananta. Omena, ndesendra. Obo no kuro noye basa zoni. Obo no kuro noye basa masi jineke. Onuari e menoga, impossible. Na na prastet ya. Ma ka se, onye zowale, is definitely not. For the national president, basa. Onyora, is definitely not. For the state president, ona nese. Onye zowale, asaju, olo de deputy state president, ona nese. Oka le, impossible no no zoni. O ma ka n'ota. Oke, ose no, impossible. Owa kuyanu, gofongu nabi. Oma de, ma ka na na para buwe beke ne. Obu nu ne, zoni ne wa na ya, ike di ja na waja, na waja. Obu kuwa no proda zoni. Owa kuza zon, so ga apa bu ba, fa na putam yo se so, no pro no me putam putam. This position. Obu position, mandi we. Mantasa. Na omo dohan nese, so wekwa ye ju. Owe bu ta ta. Na yata yoko. Kai ni na, na ba ta ta. Wa kie, malo, no biva, ke meke ne, ka yala na prastet mu. Obe loke, ndesa, yesia. Olo central. Omo iko ulung bawa, ezu bo iko kebe to be. Kai na aku buwe ni eka na na prastet oje ma, koro tro posenbo, be to be, ke ma ja na koro. Is definitely yoko. Kai we lo ku, ndisiai, wa lae ta ta, welebebe, jine yu, yu mani, nandi ni. Welemane, sita na pa dojineke. Obebe, ye la, ke ye la na prastet aga, bulebeke ye la e ni na aga, bulebeke ye ni bu. Na mechi okumu. Onye luwa, na komunitiye di chiya. Mkebe si okumu na, ana asu no onye we ni aga, e lo tya. E na we ri na aga, ane lo tya. Omo skana, ndesa, to kwanke, wekolo rokwa, na kama zo we. Ezo lukwe, so aje zonia, oye a de bu. Ma na, ema na, de kalipo obi bu si sa to putan, onu zulu ezu, e lo wa na prastet. Kai de hamkwa do, zulu, owe de la na prastet mu. Na lo no mona, ka jineke duze bebe na.
Ladies, ka, onu, engineer Frank A. Watson, tunyenke. Eh, then, we go around, briefly, briefly, very briefly, yes. Eh, yes, okay, omo siye kita, eh, omo siye, from the high table. Ma na ye take from the floor, then, o wecha. Opo ku, da luki koli. Na ma kebe ri ne. Iba ye ku la ka, oso ni, so ni na ma ka. Onu yo kuksa, eh, aso diye to no fe, high table ekya, owa asu ni la. Ma no masi seni, eka ano, beke ye, be ya bu nu ye wala, owa asu ni la. Ni na bu nu ku ye, pasapaka ni me. Anu ma ka ye ba ni, oke, no koli, de wa iku ke da. Ni no ba, ane ri me, na peke da, so ma, ni no kuwa na da, oke, ma na, ke tokuwa, ni no ke, pita ku ni, ye la ni, no ke towa, na e. Obu ni seke, kuro ma no ta, ni na kwanke kita, ke ku no tu, oli kuwa, olu kuwa ta, atakiwa, kuro, oli kuwa, kuni to siyampe, diya ta, and walk. So na, eba wo zoni, eba wo zoni, eba wo zoni, eba wo zoni. Amo oke, oso ni na, amo oke, oso ni, onu sa pito bi, bo ku zoni, pita we central, hayo central, amanasa wa sa wa, sentenawo kono. Bo kasi me sena, sentenawo kono, seti, la pito bi, lu te tobi so e dia, ma la una, eme de zoni, onu da meskiya. Unu je, noz kita, oka do bu. Yo noz kita, omo mo ke koli, ge si ta do bu, oma ke zoni. Kosa ona, oso ni, noz, ama kono za, eke spaka, so viko, ma ra ki buo ku. Na nde bu na zoni na ma ka, eba wo zoni ye, oluwa iku lo na ni, eh, oka na, oka sa, sentenawo kono. So na, eh, central de mu, be je no, ma de mu, ike sa ba ma de mu, so viko, ana yo ka wo zoni, eh, do ke ke, do, afu na, afu na, noz. Na ndesa, to ku, pa to pa, oka ta sa, je to, je to, oso ni, ana pa ri na de mu. Asa na na kuwa zoni, yes, oso ni me ye, oso ni me ye, eh, ba du chi mochi, indi ke sia, to, to kuwa ke. Oe, eh, robi na kita, na robi sa, oye sa, ke kita, olo tya, e si, ika si ju me, na na, je mu, na na, so su so dia, oso ni, oso ni ku se ye, ne ke ne mu. Ka ku se ike, oka ma ni ru, sa ika to ye ma e.
Ona nese, ibo ibo. Ibo, aspa ya na, this is the. Pa na na, eke ne no, ala lo, ya diu zono. Ne ke ne. Eh, ap moto, nama history of majesty, obi do, ke si ma ke si mo, eh, eh, so so ka di sewa, nebe wa. We ni we, pa na to, oso chi fe se, oke. Ana ne, ke ne, nu ni ne, pa la lo, na kasa, ma ni ku, nebe se, pa la lo, oye fa na, oka we ri na kono. Wena yoyo bebelepa, na ni. Wa na ba ti ya, e po, basa zoni. Ode lo, ka bo na bo ye wa ye, na na pra we, yo pila. Pila ka e buru, ka e buru na ni bu ni ne, na ni bu wa, yo na chiya. O na na pra wo, ka ebele, ma hadu, ota, ni bu, e bu, ka e buche, adem bu na ka, uka ba ka e na bu na ka no ma. Ma kola na kivi bele, aye na ta ta, ewa ba na e buke, eka na ka, na ba la yolu. Pa na ma yonu na, ta ma rose na, rose na, ebe. Aye ka, ka e ne me ka, roha ne sa, ne sa, une da, to push we to, eh, epa sa to, haswa sa to. Ka pa sa to, na pa sa to, ma ye ka le, bu, sa to. Sa na ma yonu, eka e ne me ka, ka e me ke so, ah before, ana snest you, next two years, ka na wa, wa ba do, ka haswa sa to, eh, basa to, na ulo, yo la na la. Pa na asu na, haswa ye wa. So, eke ne mu, po, da bebe, kalo pa no ma no ke bebe. Ba go lu tu, ni tu tu, so wa ya la. E ne me di zoni, oke, wo pu so, wo pu, wo pu, wo pu, immigrante ko. Ibo, ambeke bu, na zoni, thank you very much. Okay, ambecha ka, ka ya bo di bebe, ma no si la. Opo cha madam, ma ye kuwa, then I come back to. Ah, let's take a level. Ibo to, uke bo le na, uke bo le na. Sorry, ka e change the bathroom now, ni ka. Amo ye ni bo, ba ri me we, ba na ka ka. Se ke ne ka we, ni we e me. Pa na, oye a dema, e we to wa ye from governorship, to order, other elections. I'm a sick apa to change, aura so governorship election, ka na so, na na para. Ka, olu tu ye ona, aona, like a chairman, si we. Asina, aona, ogo lo de do mu, ogo a do mu, aona ogo do mu, ogo da do, omena do mu, ogo da do mu. So, ka e si na, oso ni ne, we pa ri diye, pa tu ye, onu we so komuniti si non, si sa ne me election. Pa uro, pa uka se. Pa uro ku ta ye, na oye we ni e po, eke ne mu, na ke me bebe, we ne e po, ke ke, ke me ke, ke bo de do ye na. Ah da te niye, na ula, je si ne se we ke ya wa. Ma ba, ni ya wa do we de se we, da, oyo noz ta, ko ka ula ye, iba e mi kuwa ke ne mu. Awa uke me, si ke si kuwa ye na, oye ni bo, ba ri me we, da wa, kuwa la ye ye. Kuwa la ye ye, da wa, ti kuwa, toka ka, eh, ka bu pu so, ke ta na. Eh, 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 eh.
...
...of local governments, the transition committees. Plus, now, our president, Kela Ma.
Onuwo Ebi no.
Onuwo Ebi, eh, eh, Ebi no, eh? Our government, no. Oh, I know. I like it, man. What can, how many of you are meeting? How many are we trying to get good there? They have no money, no good, you're not going to do. How they have, you know, good there? But no, I'm not going to go to the joint, get a money. Also, they have a president here. And the president here, oh. How many are in America, oh, no matter. Each time, oh, we don't want to talk. You know, who not, oh, so I got good, he don't give me the photo, no, no, they will. So if I need a group, how can I get to land, to do that? Eh, maybe we could ever, maybe he's retired. All that God, eh, we get here, my, well, oh, what's your police tsunami? Oh, I know, eh, did you push your young? Ah, oh, you're better than God, eh, eh, ona eh, man. My name is Ronisent Raffo today. One day, ninety-nine percent of Ronisent Raffo today, never go in a study. Or the task, or the minority opinion. Eh, now, we call that, no, in a hurry, to go. Eh, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, we event, tabiri, ah, yanga tabiri. Makana, eh, I hope communicate, which is. Eh, I want to, eh, yeah, go see, eh, I think, eh, I go national. Eh, 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 eh.
The pastor of seven. Eh, the vice president of Ohanese, okay, eh, I'm very great. The president of Ohanese, Anambras State. The national president of Asatu. Eh, members of the high table. Eh, past P G president. Eh, Nibo, Nindai, and Nindai in there, no. Eh, oh, who, if a two family, for me, I'm glad about. Eh, I'm very good, no, eh, too, let's make, eh, eh, too much. Eh, I'm no more, eh, they are joy. Anambras State, since nineteen ninety-seven. And two thousand and eleven, Bo Tchibio, Anambras. And then two thousand and nineteen, retired. I retire, oh, four man retire, John, eh, after, the political path. Eh, if I'm very noble. Oh, as a man, who do I go, I don't know, eh? Oh, we don't care about that, eh, eh, who do people? Eh, who do I have a nation? So she have that, eh, eh. We say, eh, 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 eh. No question, eh, no problem, oh, but I, eh, 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 eh. Eh, you let you go, piano, eh, 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 eh. Nah, eh, oh, 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 eh, eh. Eh?